All right. Good morning, Commissioners. And welcome in over to Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and welcome, everyone, to the Washington County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services. This is now meeting this regular session, October 15th, 2024. Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Fai?
I am present.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
And I'll announce Commissioner Rogers is excused for today.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board on any topic you would like for up to two minutes an individual, 10 minutes total. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. First up, we have Jill Brandt, followed by Mary Chalkopoulos. So Jill, Mary.
Please go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Brandt. I've been a resident of Washington County for six and a half years. I'm a volunteer and not an official spokesperson with United Sovereign Americans. Excuse me. Today, I am following up on the resolution that was presented to you two weeks ago. We hope that you've had time to read it and gather some information from it. I've provided another copy of the resolution for illegally valid 2024 general election and the 2022 general election validity scorecards for both Oregon and for Washington County. If you'll turn to the last page, the Washington scorecard, you can review the major points of the Washington County scorecard highlighted in the orange areas. Number one, apparent registration violations. Number two, apparent voting violations with unique votes impacted. Number three, the difference between the number of voters voting and the number of votes counted. And number four, the provable accuracy that failed to meet legal standard. The supporting evidence for this data, including individual names, ID numbers, and other information, has been given to the Secretary of State. Please ask your county council or county administrator to request it from her office for your review. We are asking you again to sign Page Four of the resolution, which states, "Be it resolved that the Commissioners of Washington County, Oregon, stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here." "We implore Washington County officials, Oregon Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both state and county boards of elections to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people." We'd like to collect these from you later this morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Mary Chalkopoulos, a Washington County resident for 23 years. The first election I ever observed was the Washington, the general election in November 2022. I observed several processes over many days. On the evening of Election Day, November 8th, I spent more than four hours observing signature verification. The rapid speed at which signatures were being verified seemed far too fast to make an accurate determination, and indeed, many non-matching signatures were being approved. Several people tried to challenge signatures, but were told it wasn't possible, which was frustrating because if not held back due to a challenge, ballots were removed from the envelopes and counted. I was informed that workers had access to a larger state database of signatures not available to observers. We were to assume that if an envelope signature was accepted and didn't match the comparison one on the screen, then it must match one in the larger database. Despite the rapid speed, I logged more than 200 voter ID numbers of envelopes with non-matching signatures. Another person logged more than 400 ID numbers over two days, and there was no duplication between our lists, and ours were not the only ones. In August 2023, per our request, Dan Forrester offered to show two of us how the system works. Using 12 of the random voter IDs I had logged as a sample, he walked us through the signature verification process, including looking at signatures in the state database. Upon reviewing all 12 signatures, Dan said that he would not have accepted two or three of them, so that would be 17 to 25 percent of this small sample. Clearly, this is a major issue that needs addressing, starting with this election. So we ask you to direct the Elections Office to please slow down the process and permit observer challenges. Since ballots are accepted for seven days past Election Day, what's the hurry? Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, who's next?
Next, we have Dale Feek. Dale?
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network. Kevin Moss, the clerk, is handing to you a written copy of what I've already emailed you, that I already emailed you. And the title of the story is "Oregon's Data Centers Want A Lot More Electricity. Who's Going to Pay? It Could Be You." That's Mike Rogaway, the reporter from The Oregonian, who has written about data centers for over 15, 20 years. He's the person that knows the most about data centers in the region and in Oregon. And I do want to do what you're doing right now. You're kind of glancing at it. So I'm just going to pick some things out that I think are important.
Go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Thank you. I may talk softer. No, I'm going to speak up louder. We'll see what I'm going to do. I don't want everybody to hear me, just you, Commissioner. I want everybody in this auditorium to hear me. I'll speak loudly. Data centers have one thing in common: powering power lines and enormous electrical substation, providing energy to run those high-octane computers and the systems that keep them cool. They take 11 percent of Oregon's electricity consumption. That's a lot of homes, twice as much as all the homes in Portland. It's only the beginning. Someone has to pay for it, and that could be where you come in. You have to finish reading the article, find out what Rogaway says about that. In theory, though, well, forget it now. There's a, there's this, look in the front page, he has it in here. Two pages, he has a graph. Take a look at that graph. It's important. Oregon's a relatively small state with immense data center industry. Hillsborough rapidly is really increasing the problem. In a filing the past week with state regulators, PGE reported that it expected Hillsborough data centers will use 2.2 million megawatts of our electricity next year. That's nearly as much as all the 287 homes in Washington County. One thing I want to say, don't sign the resolution that was presented to you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek.
I didn't look at the time.
Thank you. Is there any other members in the auditorium that wish to report by testimony at this time for up to two minutes? Raise your hand or come forward. Not seen any other in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish by public comment by utilizing the raise hand function for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to do so. Not, oh, why you have one hand, Madam Chair? All right. Kathleen, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, go ahead for up to two minutes.
I'm Kathleen Hirsch from the League of Women Voters. I would like to thank the Washington County Elections Division. The League did a number of voter registration drives. The Election Division supported us with information and handouts. They answered all of our questions promptly. I would like to thank them for their excellent and careful work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see no other hands. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of 12 items: one set of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, one item from the Office of Community Development, one item from Health and Human Services, one item from Finance, one item from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks. Say that three times. Land Use and Transportation has four items. Housing Services has one, and Human Resources has one. What are the wishes of the Commission?
I move to approve the motion.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we're on to Boards and Commissions. Today, we have the opportunity to appoint a member to the Rainbow Lane Special Road District. And that would be Jeremy Crace, who will be reappointing for a three-year term from January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027. What are the wishes of the Commission?
So moved.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we're moving on to an ordinance. Do we have a motion to read Ordinance Number 903 by title only? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Ms. Courtney Duke-Driesen, could you please read Ordinance Number 903 by title only?
Thank you, Chair. Ordinance 903, An Ordinance Amending the Transportation System Plan, All Community Plans, and the Community Development Code Relating to Parking to Conform with State Requirements.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and members of the Board. My name is Erin Mordell. I'm the Assistant Director of the Department of Land Use and Transportation. With me today is CJ Doxy, one of our senior planners, who's been shepherding this ordinance through the process. Typically, you'd have Diame Valentine here, but he's at a conference today, so I am filling in. The clicker, there we go. Today's presentation includes a background of the purpose of Ordinance 903. We have a summary of all the amendments we're proposing to make to our plan documents. We will then discuss the planning commissions, deliberations, and recommendation on this ordinance, and finally get to our staff recommendation. So as your Board recalls from previous work sessions that we've held on this item, in 2020, Governor Brown issued an executive order directing state agencies to exercise any and all authority and discretion to meet Oregon's climate goals. The Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, in conjunction with the Oregon Department of Transportation, developed a new set of rules known as the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules, amending the transportation planning rule, which are the rules that guide how we do transportation planning in the state of Oregon. The revisions to the transportation planning rule had the intent of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and required a number of changes to our regulatory plan documents. The county was required to comply with these new rules by the end of 2024, so that's coming up on us now. The original deadline was July of 2023. We requested an extension, giving our workloads, and were granted that by the state. When these rules took effect, they immediately required jurisdictions to stop requiring minimum parking within certain proximity to transit. These rules took effect much faster than, I think, most jurisdictions or any jurisdictions could actually amend their regulatory documents. So we have already been enforcing part of these rules in the areas highlighted in blue and yellow on the map above. I think this covers about 56 percent of urban unincorporated Washington County. So as of right now, if someone were to come in with a development application within those areas, we would not be enforcing minimum parking because the state rules say that we can't. The ordinance before you today would extend the parking regulations to all of urban Washington County, and that's what you see highlighted in blue above. And so this would take care of that remaining percentage that had not been covered by the transit buffering in the previous slide. The minimum parking requirements required by this, the state statute, requires us to repeal our minimum parking requirements. This applies to new development and redevelopment in the urban unincorporated areas. There's no changes required to our rural areas, and this is specifically applicable within the metro-urban growth boundary. Metro area cities are all required to complete similar work. There are alternatives to repealing the minimum parking requirements. However, those alternatives require setting up parking pricing programs or other regulatory frameworks that would require additional staff and pretty extensive additional work to do that. I think it's important to keep in mind, though, that the Board could choose to do that at a later date if you wanted to reimplement minimum parking in some areas. However, another important thing to keep in mind is that we would still have to stop enforcing minimum parking in those transit buffer areas. So regardless of if we chose to set up a parking pricing program, there's still a significant part of urban unincorporated Washington County where we would not be allowed to require minimum parking and would be required to enforce the other regulatory changes that I'll be talking about. So there's a lot of nuance with these rules, considering the fact that there's very little flexibility for what the county can do. The regulations also require us to implement maximum parking requirements, which is something the county already had within our development code. So we've made revisions to how we were requiring these in order to comply with the new state rules. We had essentially two zones identified in our community plans, Zone A and Zone B. The new standards were more in line with Zone A, and so we made some minor modifications to that within all of our community plans in order to comply. On-street parking is an interesting piece of this whole puzzle. Washington County, as far as we can tell, is the only jurisdiction that had on-street parking requirements for some development applications. What that means is that depending on how much parking the development was providing on-site, they may also be required to provide some on-street parking spaces, which has to do with how they design the street and if they're allowing people to have on-street parking. It's a pretty difficult thing to regulate, and it's a pretty difficult thing to implement, which is possibly why Washington County was the only jurisdiction that had such requirements. While the state rules did not specifically require us to remove this from our regulatory rules, we think that it complies with the spirit of the rules, and it actually makes our implementation simpler to take the step of removing our on-street parking requirements as well. One of the options we did have is addressed on this slide, which is that a number of the concerns we've heard about this ordinance and the state's rules in general is that there could be a lot of problems with people attempting to find parking in areas that are now parking restricted. So we added a policy reinforcing our neighborhood streets parking program. This is a program that already exists at Washington County, and we can talk a little bit more about it if you have questions about how that program works, but it is an existing program. And so we added a policy to our TSP underscoring the importance of that program and how it can benefit neighborhoods. The CEFAC rules also include a number of specifics relating to parking lot design. So if someone does choose to build a parking lot of a certain size, they are required to install a certain number of trees to eventually provide a tree canopy to prevent heat island effects, essentially. And so we have changed our requirements to comply with those requirements for parking lots of a certain size. Some of the other concerns we heard in formulating this ordinance was about a lack, potential lack of ADA parking. So an additional area of flexibility we had was to require that when a development does not have on-site parking, but does have a loading zone area, that they would be required to have an ADA parking space installed as a part of that. This only applies to certain types of developments, so multifamily developments over three stories, institutional uses, large commercial uses, and large industrial uses. So this is our attempt to make sure that even if there isn't on-site parking, there would at least be some ADA accommodation made. The ordinance findings establish our compliance with applicable policies of our statewide planning goals, including the transportation planning rule, the Oregon Highway Plan, the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, and the Metro Regional Transportation Functional Plan. Our Planning Commission held one hearing on this ordinance on August 7th of 2024. Two individuals provided oral testimony, and one individual provided written testimony. All were opposed to removing minimum parking requirements and were concerned about negative externalities. The Planning Commission held a robust discussion, but at the end determined that we are doing what we have to do in this case to comply with state regulations. And so they did recommend approval to your Board, seven to zero. So your staff recommendation for today is to conduct the public hearing, adopt Ordinance 903 as filed, and then by separate action, adopt the associated findings. And that concludes our staff report.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Nope. Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us on this matter?
Yes, we do. We have Andrea Moore and Pauline. I'm going to apologize, last name Dietz, as it is, so please come forward. Oh, okay, no worries. All right, is there anyone in the auditorium? Melissa?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Melissa Laird. I've been a resident of Washington County for over 40 years. And I want to speak a little bit about this ordinance. And first, I want to thank CJ. Where did he go? Thank you so much for spending some time with me on the phone and going over this ordinance with me. I really appreciate that. I learned a lot from that conversation. So as we know, I understand the ordinance, 903, is to comply with state mandate for the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules. And I know that you guys will adopt this ordinance as filed. You need to do that. However, these new parking regulations that include repealing minimum off-street parking requirements and removing on-street parking requirements leaves these parking decisions basically up to the developers. Now, of course, the developers are going to build enough parking to secure their loans and sell their properties. Not everybody is not going to want a car. So there are going to be some parking in future housing areas. However, they will only build enough that they think they need to, to sell their property. The county, then, will have to deal with spillover parking, as you do now, as more, as there will likely be more people who are trying to park than the spaces that exist. So we have that today. I think we're going to have even a bigger problem in the future with these new rules. One of, one of the questions is, how are we going to do this? If we have on-street parking, then how are we going to manage that? The Neighborhood Streets program is a good program, but it's really there to allow the neighborhood people to park in their neighborhood and discourage those people who are outside of the parking, out of their area, to come in and park. So for example, if you're next to a high school and there's a football game, and, you know, people are trying to find parking, they want to maybe park in the neighborhood area, and that's what that Neighborhood Streets program is about. But as we see more and more areas where there is not enough parking, and on-parking becomes a dear space, and you see streets that are lined with cars on both sides of the road, how are we going to handle that? Are we going to have parking permits that everybody has to do, and are we going to?
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay. Anyway, it's, it's a tough problem that's coming our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, anyone else?
All right, Mr. Feek?
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966. Two things I want to say. One, I appreciate the competence of the Forest Grove Planning Department. I disagreed with WIM in Urban Growth Bounty in one particular thing they said. I think they got it wrong. I think they admitted that. But beyond that, I see expert staff doing their job, trying to accommodate what's happened and required from the state. And I'm glad that we're trying to do something climate-friendly. We have an existential crisis related to climate and the climate disaster. And so I appreciate that. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, that concludes, yes, ma'am, and then followed by Bob Terry, so you can both join.
Hello, Chairman, and Chairman, or Members. My name's Joanne Applegate. I'm a resident of Washington County since second grade. So I don't know, 1978, I remember for many years that is. I live in unincorporated Washington County, Aloha. And this is the first I've heard of this parking ordinance, and I'm appalled. This is entirely crazy. We have South Hillsborough development and all of the additional homes that are being built there. The roads themselves are not accommodating the traffic increase, and Farmington Road specifically. And now we're talking about cutting parking in addition, and not even having minimum parking. I also have two sons that are disabled, blind, and deaf. And I drive them, and they have a handicap parking permit that I have for them. Having one space in some of these locations was, is, this whole thing is crazy. So we're more concerned about the trees being in the parking structure, parking lots, than the cars. So we're making climate-friendly for the trees and for the air supposedly, but not for the people who actually live in this community and who pay for all of these things. I am just incredibly appalled. We do not have a climate existential emergency. The only part that we have with the climate existential emergency is the way it's being used by governments to impose their regulations on the people and limit our freedoms. And the education system, who refuses to actually report the science regarding this issue and is scaring the population into action that is not necessary, period. In case you haven't been to unincorporated Washington County, we have extreme amounts of land in our county that is going unused, while at the same time, we are crowding everybody into four- and five-story apartment complexes and not allowing them to park. And we don't have enough transportation and buses to accommodate, even if we wanted to ask my son, who rides the system continuously. Thank you for your time. I realize this is a state ordinance you're dealing with, and that's where we need to deal with the problem, but you guys can also.
Thank you.
We sit. Thank you so much.
Mr. Terry?
Please, folks, please. Mr. Terry, you raised your hand.
There's somebody else back there, there's two. Well, good morning, Madam Commissioner and Chair and Commissioners. And I, just listening to that last ordinance and knowing, having sat in your positions and experienced, and I had this myself in this county, when transitioning from my one home to another home, while I was waiting in between, I had the pleasure of temporarily living in an apartment. And I have to tell you, it's very, very difficult to find a place for your car. Very difficult. In fact, I received two parking tickets on the street. One because of my front wheel was over the line of the no parking sign, and the other because my rear end was over the line of the parking. You see, we don't allow enough positions for people to park in this county. So I would love to have heard a robust hearing, but somehow I dropped off the list of receiving those notifications and some of those hearings, particularly here at the County Commission as well. Why I dropped off from that one and the land use and transportation mailing list, I don't know, but I did. And, but it would be nice to be back on those lists, so I know what is going on, so that I can voice for the people as well, as you gentlemen and ladies do. So what I'm asking for you is to reconsider with the, with the staff or in the, or the process that we were using to determine this parking situation, because it is very serious. And if you live in an apartment complex, there is not enough, enough room there to park for those people who are living there. And, and I know the HBA and some of the builders may love it because if they can put in two more buildings, and that's more cash register ring they get from those two buildings, but it doesn't help the people who are living there. They are living there and being forced to do that. So I know my time is about up, so I thank you very much for your consideration. But this, the metro has always been to force us out of our cars and onto public transportation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, folks, folks. Clerk Moss, who's next?
That concludes in the auditorium. I see no other hands. Would any member online via Zoom, which probably comment on this public hearing, as you've heard the staff report give you just a moment to realize raise hand function? Not seen any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any Commissioner comments?
I would like to, sorry, I have a quick question for Erin. Erin, I lost my slide side now. Thank you for coming back. I have a quick question about the maximum parking requirement as opposed to the minimum. I realized on Slide 7, there's a footnote that says Zone A applies to properties located within one-quarter mile of a bus route. So the maximum parking requirement applies areas that lack transit, public transit.
Not exactly. So if I could explain this a little bit more, and CJ can jump in if I don't get this exactly right, but we had already made changes to our community plans that reflected areas that we thought had better transit service, and therefore we would require less or have a lower maximum parking requirement, and that's Zone A. It actually ended up being quite similar in some ways to how the state then implemented some of their rules, considering how close to transit things are and how that affects the need for parking. So our community plans had this Zone A area that had a lower maximum and Zone B that had a higher maximum parking number. With these new rules, they are more similar to what we had already established in Zone A, and so now our maximum parking requirement for the unincorporated area as a whole is similar to what we had had in Zone A. Is that accurate?
Yes, and I'll also add a couple clarifying points in that we are exceeding, what's proposed before you now is exceeding the state requirements. The reason for that is a little technical in nature, because the state requirements require for jurisdictions to update the applicable areas based off of any changes to transit service on an annual basis. And for us, based off of the structure and the framework that we have these standards in or could tweak them to be in, they would need to be changed through ordinances, which is a fairly time-consuming process. Conservatively, it's a six-month period from the time you file to adoption, considering appeals, and that leaves a window of possible, what's the word I'm looking for? Where we wouldn't be consistent with state regulations, where we would have periods of time where we would have to be applying state requirements directly or run the risk of applying them incorrectly.
Because our transit providers can change their routes anytime they want, and then that would change where our regulatory framework's applied. We find it quite onerous to come back to the Board once a year with an ordinance to comply with the new maps based on transit service as of the day we file the ordinance. And so we felt that this was a better approach for Washington County in particular.
And then the last question, thank you for that explanation. That really helped my concern about the lack of public transit in certain areas. Now, in the ordinance, would there be some triggering points where there is no public transit and there is a development flexibility in that area? Would there be an opportunity then to require parking or?
We, the state rules do not allow us to require minimum parking anywhere in unincorporated Washington County unless we choose a path to set up a regulatory parking pricing program, set up rules for unbundling commercial parking from a development, which requires legal agreements that were not set up to review and ensure compliance with, or implement a tax program on commercial parking structures. So it's fairly rigorous in order to comply with any of the alternative paths.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner questions or comments? Okay, I would like to thank you staff for your work on this. I additionally want to recognize the members of the Planning Commission who have had extensive discussion on this. They include Mike Frey, Joe Kaiser, Deborah Lockwood, Rachel Morrie-Badot, Amber Rosenberry, Jared Whips, Morgan Will, Eric McLendon, and Felicita Monte Blanco. So good work, staff. I really appreciate your thoroughness in your proposals and all the due diligence that is done to bring us these required changes. With that, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 903? I already closed the budget hearing. I closed it.
Chair, I would make the motion. I move the motion.
Is there a second? Second. Clerk Moss, could you do the roll call, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Trees?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fay?
Aye.
Chair Harrington.
Yes, thank you. The ordinance passes unanimously four to zero. Next, do we have a motion to adopt the findings for ordinance 903?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I just want to double check for that motion. It's a motion to adopt the findings for ordinance number 903 and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution and ordinance memorializing the action. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And next, we move on to our second public comment period of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the Board for up to five minutes, an individual total of 30 minutes. Clerk Moss, who do we have signed up today?
We have Bob Terry and Karen Schmidlin, if you both can come forward.
Good morning, once again, Commissioners. I apologize if I don't hear you all, because I turn off my phone, which runs my hearing aids, so it doesn't ring while I'm here, and so it does affect my hearing, and I apologize for that. It's something I've had to learn with, that live with, that I'm not real happy about. And why have we started to meet clock already, sir? There we go, thank you. Again, good morning, Madam Commissioners and Commissioners. I am here to make some requests from this Board. First, we would like to, this morning, we heard earlier from one of our members of elected citizens, made a request of you. Again, I'm making that request, that you sign that statement. It is a very simple statement. I think we've provided you all the information with it. It's a public statement from our Board that you are in compliance and that you agree with the rules and regulations of the state, but more importantly, of our federal government. And that's simply what it is stated, but we have provided you everything in it, where it states, and we ask you to sign that. The Commissions' Elections Office official and other administrative, and then first, that's the first thing. Secondly, we would like to, we would like to have a work session with the Commissioners and staff for a full presentation of our findings. The things that we have begun talking about over the past two sessions, which would be better presented in a once rather than piecemeal weekly over the course of several months. You heard earlier from our elected citizen Jill Brandt, who asked you to sign the resolution for legally valid 2024 general election. If your signature, please indicate your support or non-support, then pass it to the clerk so we may collect them today. Can we count on you getting this signed resolution today? Commissioner Willie?
You're free to address the Board, but we don't engage during public comment.
Commissioner Trees? Commissioner Fay? And Madam Chair? This is far the record, thank you very much. I'd like to make one other request of you. We'd like to request the creation of a task force to include our elected citizens, one Commissioner, one Elections Office, Office official, and other administrative personnel or staff to discuss and work through the election issues. Two very simple but very serious requests that we are asking of you to consider. We will continue for several months, making our presentation if necessary, and we will do it individually on individual items in compliance with the regulations of this commission. We support this commission, and we support the citizens of this community. We represent a very, very large number of them, and some of them you have seen here. And we can fill up the lobby if necessary, and we don't want to do that. We want to work with you. We love your, we actually appreciate and respect our Elections Office and the workers over at the Elections Office. That is not where our problem is, that they are doing things wrong. That's not our issue. Our issue, there are things that are taking place that are being ignored, and we have presented some of them to you. And they are being ignored and gone on, and it is not making our elections proper and correct and truthful. And we're asking that those things be looked at and corrected. Two of the Commissioners, one to be a Commissioner and one Commissioner, Mr. Willie, have seen part of our presentation. And it was outlined in there very definitely, he made a lot of notes, as to what some of these anomalies and these falsehoods are that are taking place and changing the numbers of our elections. And I'm sorry, Chair, that you don't believe this or look up at us and address me when I'm talking to you, but that doesn't really surprise me. But I would ask you to consider the requests that we have made, and appreciate it very much, and we hope to hear from you on that soon. If you assign those requests, we'd be happy to collect them. If not, you will be hearing from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Schmidlin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for your service to our county. My name is Karen Schmidlin. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of Washington County in Banks. For four years, I have served as an election observer. Dan Forrester and the Elections Office staff have generally been professional and pleasant to work with, and many of the observers have a good rapport with them. That said, I would like to comment on my experience with observing elections in light of Dan's comments at the Commissioners' meeting on October 1st. During his presentation, Dan noted that we have an observer room to watch all aspects of the process, including signature verification and ballot adjudication. If you have visited the Elections Office, then you know the observer room is far removed from ballot processing, and you can please refer to the Elections Office schematic that I provided in the last page, and observers are not able to watch all aspects of the process. There are several blind spots. Ballots travel off-camera to unknown locations, and observers have no visibility as to where and how election results are reported. During the October 1st public testimony, you heard some of these common observation complaints, which warrant repeating. The viewing screens are of poor quality. The security cameras used are not intended for close-up viewing. Four of about 13 random camera views rotate at 45-second intervals, and up to three of the screens may sometimes show the same view. It's impossible to follow a process flow. There's no sound to hear conversation and no date and timestamp on the videos to confirm their authenticity. Separate screens are used to observe signature verification, where electronic ballot envelope signatures are compared with those on file. Issues with this process include: electronic signatures, many captured on digital devices, are of poor quality. Observers do not have access to all the signatures on file, so they cannot truly witness this process. Election workers generally speed through the verification process, spending only about three seconds per screen. Many signatures do not match, and observers are unable to challenge them. Thousands of signatures may be accepted without any witnesses at all if the screens aren't working, or if there are more verifiers than screens, or in the case of small or special election, when the verification software isn't accessed at all due to cost. In our vote-by-mail system, a matching signature is literally the only method we have to prove that a voter signed the envelope submitted. As a witness to signature verification, I cannot say that I feel confident about the process of our elections in any way. There's just too much opportunity for fraud. Our elections are far too important for us to just trust that this is okay. Adjudication, also observed on the screens, seems to be pretty transparent when the screens are operational. However, during the many times when they are not, there are no witnesses to the process. The poor observer practices I've outlined have taken a toll on citizens' confidence. I cannot tell you how many times I've heard new observers say with frustrations that this is a joke. Many times, an enthusiastic first-time observer walks away feeling disenfranchised and with a newfound loss of trust in the election process. As a member of the public myself, in my best effort to be an involved citizen and to witness the election process, I am disheartened. As a voter, I feel disenfranchised. I was not an observer at the Elections Office on Murray Boulevard, but I have spoken to many people who were. There, the observers were in the same room as the staff and were able to observe everything. I've heard from Dan that this is just not possible, even though the new building is quite a bit larger than the old one. There is no real explanation as to why it's not possible. As county commissioners, it is imperative to recognize and acknowledge that elections belong to the people, and therefore it is mandatory that you direct the Elections Office to allow true access to the public, beginning with the current election. The public has a right to meaningful observation of elections with radical transparency and accountability in the democratic process. This is a right rooted in the principles of free and fair elections. It is transparency, not secrecy, that builds trust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
All right, do we have any other persons in the auditorium that wish to probably comment during this period? Ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, I am Sarah Gent. I was here a couple weeks ago at speed reading for you the proclamation, or whatever we call it, that just our hopes to have a free and fair election. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I, there's time, and I thought I'd just take an opportunity to extemporaneously give you some feedback. So you probably all hire campaign coordinators and maybe consult organizations for your reelection campaigns, and you probably have to pay for that, but I thought I'd just give you free, free observational feedback. I'm not sure when each of you has your position open again, and apparently you're not in the habit of actually having a dialogue with citizens when they come at this time, because I have a full five minutes, I'd be happy to give you 20 seconds each to answer two questions. The two questions would be, if you would be brave enough to answer them, that's, one, when are you up for reelection? And two, if you were to rate your enjoyment of public interaction at Commissioner meetings on a scale of 0 to 10, I would love to hear your response. Zero being, I hate it, I can't stand dealing with the public, and my body language reflects that, including my facial expressions. And 10 being, I love it, it's the best part of being a Commissioner, it's interacting and hearing from the public. Are you, either, any of you willing to answer those two questions? When are you up for reelection? And two, how much do you really enjoy or hate interacting with the public? Anyone? Raise your hand. Show your, show your, nope. I can tell, because, you know, so basically, we are left to interpret your body language, because you won't verbally respond to our questions, which is insane. This is an insane process we have here. This is supposed to be like interaction with the public, and you sit there. And so we're left to read smirking, shrugging, body language slouching, while at the same time, we can come to a meeting and see camaraderie among you, enjoyment of having lots of photo ops, handing out awards and ribbons to your funkies. But to us, you're like Stonewall. We do get some smiles, we try to get a little levity, at least I'm trying to see response in you, and a smile is great. But the look that looks disdainful, and I think, I'm not knowing many names, it's pretty obvious who the disdainful looks are coming from, it's rude. And it's like, why do we want to reelect you guys when you won't even talk to us? And it's like, why do we want to reelect you guys, when you won't even talk to us? It's really dumbfounding how this process has evolved. I suppose as citizens, we will need to like, come up with an initiative and change the protocol of like, that you guys have, you know, manufactured, that makes us all just like little puppets that come in and we talk to a wall, and you don't respond, and, but you have plenty of time for each other, and like I said, your photo ops, we do see that you enjoy certain events, but this one, where you have asked for the public input, it's like, you're like swallowing a big vitamin pill and just sort of tolerating it. It's really sad. It's not funny at all, Catherine, it's really, really sad. It's a very sad state of affairs. God bless you, God's watching.
Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
That concludes in the auditorium. Would any member online wish to probably comment for up to five minutes on any call and ready topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll do Board announcements. Next Tuesday, October 22nd, our work session starts at 1:00, and we have an evening Board meeting starting at 6:30 PM. Then we're into the month of November. We have our work session on November 5th, starting at 9:00. We'll pause that and reconvene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors at 10:00. And immediately following that, probably around 10:15 or so, from the looks of the draft agenda, we'll have our Board meeting at about 10:15. On Thursday, November 7th, we'll have our roundtable. We have a Clean Water Services Learning Day the Friday before that. That would be, hmm, I don't remember the date.
November 1st.
Thank you. On Tuesday, November 12th, we have just work sessions starting at 9:00, going the rest of the day. Tuesday, November 19th, we have work sessions starting at 1:00, and a Board meeting at 6:30 PM. The following Tuesday is the Thanksgiving holiday, so week, so we won't be meeting that Tuesday. Are there any other Board announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We're hereby adjourned.